This is August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-four. It is now nine a.m. I ask that you please rise for the invocation and pledge allegiance from Councilmember Mr. Matt Chandler.
Heavenly Father, we thank you to this day. I thank you for all the blessings you have brought to the city. We ask for that to continue, Father. Out of this meeting today, we can make decisions that will move our city forward. And that we give all the praise and honor as well. In Jesus' name we do it.
Amen. My pleasure. This is the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chandler. We will now move to item three. Motion finding that the advanced posting and notice requirements of Article eight point one two zero zero of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Orange, Texas have been met in relation to all minutes then giving ordinances and resolutions on this agenda and that the reading of such items be confined to the captions as are agreed upon by the ordinances and resolutions. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Should we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. On to item four, citizen comments. At this time, comments will be taken from the audience on any subject matter, whether or not that item is on the agenda. All comments are limited to a maximum of three minutes for each speaker, and your comments are appreciated. As the Texas Open Meetings Act does not allow the council to respond to items not listed on the agenda, your comments will be duly noted by the council and forwarded to the appropriate department for prompt consideration. A member of the audience that desires to speak during the city council's consideration of any specific agenda item is requested to notify city staff prior to the start of the meeting. At this time, the first name that I have on my list is Mr. Scott Burley. Please come forward, state your name and address. I'm going to serve right.
Uh, Scott Burley, forty-two fifty White Oak Road. And the subject I'm here to talk to you about is White Oak Road. Uh, there's a middle section of our road. Uh, I actually talked to Matt and Brad, and they were gracious enough to come out and be with me so we could discuss it. Uh, the road is beyond patching. The effort to patch has been great the last two years. I see that there was patch up there this morning, but it's beyond that. First spring and the patching is gone, and even the patch itself is now about point three miles of rumbles. So, uh, the road probably should have been done last year. We all are receiving damage to our vehicles. Uh, call it ironic or what, but I had to text Brad and Matt, uh, tell them that it may be a slow, uh, late car meeting. My wife had broke down on the interstate in my ear, electronic fuel module. Guys, that's a computer. You shake a computer long enough, they're gonna go out. I don't know what else to say other than I think we're overdue. Uh, the middle section is junk because of construction years ago. Uh, did you get the pictures or if you have any to share? No, we don't. No, okay. Uh, there's a defensive line where the tar was done right for the rock and tar road, and then it's a light color in the damaged section, whether the tar was kind of stretched it or whatever it may be, that is the section that is going to jump. Uh, so if we could definitely fix the middle section this year, uh, because my understanding, rock and tar roads cannot be done in the winter, and I would hate to know we have to make it till next April, May, or whenever they start rocking tar again. So I'm asking, please, fix that middle section this year. Questions, comments, concerns?
We can't make it, yes.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Am I done?
If you're wrong, you got whatever. You keep going for a minute.
Uh, I mean, it is what it is. I mean, uh, we've got some pictures of it. Uh, I ask that all of y'all, if you have the ability to to fix it this year and you wanna take a look, drive out to White Oak. Hosted thirty mile an hour speed limit, I promise you. If you're doing ten, you're carrying your own.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burley. Next, we have Benadine Mason.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Benadine Mason, Public Information Officer with the U.S. Small Business Administration. I'm simply here just to inform you all that due to Hurricane Barrel, this county has been declared a federal declaration, and you all are available. Sorry. Federal assistance is available to renters, homeowners, private nonprofits, and businesses. Uh, the U.S. Small Business Administration along with FEMA will be opening a disaster recovery center this Thursday. We have a soft opening at one P.M. at the Convention and Expo Center. Um, to those that are homeowners who may qualify for up to six hundred thousand to repair, replace any other damaged property and personal property. Um, also for renters, a hundred thousand dollars into businesses, whether it's loss in capital or any disaster in your inventory, equipment or machinery, you can qualify for up to two million. Um, the application deadline currently is October the tenth of this year, and you have one full year if you do get approved for funding to make your first payment. No interest to hold during that time, and you have two years from the time you receive your disbursement to request an increase. So the funding will be available again. The disaster recovery center will be open and available to all that have been impacted by Hurricane Barrel this Thursday at one P.M.
Thank you. Thank you so much. If we can get your information so we can get it and share it on our city webpage as well. Thank you, ma'am. Okay? I have two names that it looks like they crossed them out, so we will go to Mr. Logan Russell.
Real quickly, uh, my address is seven hundred Hickory Trails, Orange, Texas, zip code seven seven six three two, Hattie City Council, and Hattie, North Beers. Um, I am a longtime resident of Orange since birth, a current fall business owner of Runnerside Cookies, and a recent Texas graduate. I'm gonna be going off to my hand of Master's Program or planning. My whole goal is to eventually become a urban planner with more emphasis on helping communities grow in more climate-reserving communities, along with economic stronger and to be more attractive. This is why I'm speaking today, because I received a return to Orange to help Orange become a stronger town and to help understand why I want to do this. I want to share my experience as a youth growing up in Orange and how I see it today. A lack of autonomy would describe my childhood and adolescent years. Going to school, seeing friends, or participating in anything in this community required my parents to drive me there. And as a kid who could not drive all the time, or really could not drive, I had no means of accessing anything in Orange, and this was frustrating at times because both of my parents worked. I'm being stuck at school or home, unable to really do anything to be part of this community. And now in my twenties, you know, returning back to Orange is kind of lackluster. The same, we have the same businesses as nearly any other town in really Texas or in the USA, which is eerily uncanny how you can take any business and you can find it anywhere else in really this state. Along with that, a lot of these businesses are more concerned about economic transactions rather than overall community growth or helping this community grow. There are no local or reoccurring events where small businesses like mine can actually grow their business. Runnerside Cookies achieved a whole sales record and are in the park back in April, but since then, there's really hasn't been many opportunities for me to come back here and help grow my business here and to eventually start one. Along with that, you know, our downtown area is really disheartening to look at. Our Riverfront Boulevard Pavilion is right now covered with litter from industrial, from some industrial grade trash. A lot of our buildings are sitting abandoned and underutilized with tire locks sitting empty, and really exploring Orange outside of the car is really more deadly because we don't have proper traffic calming measures to slow down vehicles, along with a lot of the oversized SUVs and trucks, making it more deadly if you were to be in an accident. And still without a bar, I'm effectively barred from society as I was as a child in participating, which is why I'm here, because I would like to dedicate my research, my assignments, and any of this professional resources to help finding solutions towards these problems. And to be honest, you know, I don't have everything that, you know, to solve these issues currently right now, you know, that's why I'm entering into a master's programs to find the best solutions that fit the context of our, for our community, revitalizing our downtown, more gate, community engagement, especially on our youth, zoning reforms, Dutch road design, debt for proper traffic calming, pieces of suppression of the ideas, and cities like Brian, Texas have been able to do that for safer streets. And, you know, with that, I hope to eventually come back to this community, whether it be an internship or research, to help this community grow, to be more involved with our community, and most importantly, to be able to come back here as a young person and help grow a business.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, thank you, Mr. Russell. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, if not, then we will go to the next item on the agenda, number five, city announcements. So city staff announcements and city events.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Just a reminder that we are fifty-two days away from our annual Orange sober event. Uh, the festival takes place between October fourth and the sixth. You know, this event has quickly grown into a community event, event, I'm sorry. Uh, and we will have, uh, activities, live entertainment, music, uh, and we look forward to seeing everyone there again, October fourth through the sixth. Thank you.
Quick question. So do we have any room? Do we have room for more vendors?
Which type? Of which type?
For like selling cookies?
Oh, already.
Oh, okay. I just wanted to make sure, okay. I just wanted to make sure that he knew about the upcoming.
So, yes, you can still apply to be a, um, market vendor.
Okay, great. And then we had a, we had an event this past weekend, too.
Yes.
Right? The Blues Festival? Okay. All right, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything else for city staff announcements?
No.
All right, we will move to consent agenda. June fourth, twenty twenty-four, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting Minutes. Also, July ninth, twenty twenty-four, Orange Economic Development Corporation Meeting Minutes, and July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, regular city council meeting minutes. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
And Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Next on the agenda, we have a presentation, a briefing on the Livingston Park Master Plan from Mr. Adam Jack.
Good morning, Mayor. Good morning, Mayor. Pleasure to be presenting to you the Livingston Park Master Plan that we have developed, um, in cooperation with Lamar University and the Big Think Biosphere. Um, we're gonna, I'm gonna go through this presentation, give you some background. Um, at the end, I'm going to give Dr. Marilyn Guidry an opportunity to speak with Lamar University, also a resident of Cove, and, um, Ms. Mary Bernard, who is with Biosphere. I'm gonna give them this opportunity to comment about the process and their, their viewpoints. Livingston Park is about twenty-five acre, uh, park that we have in the northern portion of Cove. It's bounded by Adams Bayou. Stark Foundation owns an island just to the south. West Orange, on the other side of the bayou, also has a, uh, natural preserve area or area, uh, there within, within the neighborhood. Uh, the background of the park is it was originally the homestead to the Livingston family. There's a Texas historical marker there. The park has reached its lifespan. There's rehabilitation done in the eighties with, uh, Texas Parks and Wildlife, along with some other, uh, federal grant to install fitness trail, restaurants, pavilion. And then in the two thousands, we did a renovation and adding playgrounds, swings, and smaller things. Recently, uh, we granted GT Polymers an easement property for them to install some pipelines and approve that purchase of that easement. We have established and ceded money for repurposing, uh, Livingston Park. As a city, generally, our parks group categorizes parks in a number of different ways. We have just your regular community park, one that supports the community with a playground and other things. Then we have community parks with unique elements, such as a hay farm with splash cat. We also have event parks, such as Riverside and Riverfront. And then we also have a regional park, what we consider regional parks, such as Lions there in the Red Center. But there's something missing from this list as we looked at it and we came, we realized there's something missing, and the thing that was missing was a nature park. We really don't have a facility within the city that is really dedicated, if you will, to nature. So with that, we reached out to some subject matter experts led primarily by the Big Think Biosphere and the Center for Resiliency of Lamar University. We partnered with these folks here and asked them to come in and help us develop the master plan for these twenty-five acres on Adams Bayou. It took, it took a little while, um, but what we came, what came out of it, I think, was a sanctuary. The first thing they did was they went out and looked in Livingston Park, see what was out there, uh, as far as nature went, and we were very pleasantly surprised. Flora, phauna, drawing, extensive butterflies, marshland, waterfowl, uh, there are many different categories. We also found a number of different, just tremendous amounts of birds and raptors out there as well. Um, and what we also, through this subject matter experts, found out was there are ten species of conservation listed by Texas that reside on the property, including this fledgling rachel or hawk that lives right out by, right out by Bayou. So we realized very quickly the re, the benefit of the recent natural resource that we had out there. So this subject matter group, along with city officials, came to the vision of passive natural use of property, conservation-focused, trying to look more at birding, uh, watershed protection activities, uh, trying to improve water quality around Bayou itself, um, because right now it is listed as an impaired water, uh, with the state, and we'd like to improve that. And also the community interaction nearby, you know, lots of adjacent property owners and businesses that could benefit from looking at this as a passive natural use. That led to our opportunities. GT Polymers, uh, is gonna be going in and doing their work shortly. When they do, they'll be clearing out some trees, and there's an opportunity for us to reestablish those areas more as metal, uh, repurposing those areas part of this master plan ultimately. And as I said, with their purchase of the easement, it provided the valuable funding that we need to go after, leverage those funds against grant funds in order to try to extend the amount of the improvements that we can do. The Stark Foundation adjacent, uh, kudos to the Stark Foundation, particularly Angie Mason, who's here with Shangalat, who gave us lessons learned about, hey, if you're gonna look at these kind of things, these are some of the things you wanna look at, these are some of the things Shangalat also learned in the past. But also them owning the island next door to this parcel, the island has a possibility of being a rookery, uh, for more bird, uh, bird visitors, for birding. Uh, there is potential for, if we look at bird specifically, there's a possibility of getting on the Great Texas Coastal Birding Trail, which is supported by the state. There's nearly four hundred bird species that migrate through our area yearly, along with monochores. With that said, we came up with this general master plan. Uh, Livingston Street, uh, which is the street adjacent to the park on the right-hand side, twenty-five acres stretches back to my area in gray, is the GT Polymers area that is slated to be converted to meadow, preferably flowering, expanded parking, a pollinator garden, and ultimately redoing the pavilion and the restrooms that are out there to be reached by foot only. Uh, kayak launch, uh, adjacent to the Stark property, which could possibly be a rookery in the future. Uh, about a mile is worth of trails, gravel trails back there, bird lines, bird housing, uh, drips, water drips for birds, fishing dock, all slated within the master plan. Phase one, that we can see is reestablishing the gravel paths, installing flowering meadows, looking at pollinators, such as the area that we worked with Biosphere at the, uh, at the Boat Ring, uh, bird nesting areas, try to get those things installed first, followed by educational signing, water drinks for the birds so that they have a good source of water, some expanded parking that's green, that is not impervious, but it is turbious, and kayak launch, launch down in that area. There will also be other opportunities for external funding, whether it's grants or whether it's, um, businesses that would wish to invest in the area, raptor platform, benches and seating, similar to what we've done with Cove for fishing area, fishing piers, or what we've done with, uh, oat ramp, bird lines are all possibilities. Master plan possible, completely unfunded at this juncture in time within our budget, one hundred and thirty thousand dollars for phase one to basically install, restore the walking path and add some new elements. Phase two, have the signing, the kayak launching, uh, seventy-six thousand. Total master plan investment looks to be about a million dollars. We know a million dollars is a lot of money, but one of the things that this group also firmly identified and I'm a supporter of is a greater long-term vision that Livingston Park fits into and adds to Adams Bayou Waterway trade. Ecter is a big business. Uh, Autobond Society in, uh, in San Antonio, in San Antonio, you know, states that it's got a nine to one return on the investment. When you invest a dollar in birding, you'll get nine dollars back because of the turds that you own. In addition, we've got tremendous numbers of businesses in town, just from I-ten south to Chemical Road. That's about five and a half miles of waterway, and there's more than four hundred acres that's already reserved for nature, if you can all, for, and in the future, as we develop to the north, that waterway could extend further northward. So that is the completion of the general presentation, and if I've got to bid read and Ms. Bernard come up and give just a few words, ladies.
Good morning. Thanks for letting me speak. I'm Marilyn Guidry. I work with the Center for Resiliency at Lamar University, and it's been a pleasure to be involved in this process, and I must say that, uh, we, Center for Resiliency, we try to help with planning and long-term sustainability type issues. We're a communication center at Lamar University, and we're pretty new, so we're trying to stretch our wings and get involved in different community, um, projects. But, uh, more importantly is I'm a resident of Orange and, uh, I'm also a master naturalist, and I love Livingston Park, and this is close to my house, and the park floods, there's a lot of water issues here, but my neighborhood does not, and I give credit to the park for that because we, we're close to nature, we're close to the park, but we, we've endured very well, and, uh, it's, the wildlife is there. You know, I, I love the park because every day there's something I can see there, and it's close to my neighborhood. The kids in my, the kids in my neighborhood love the park, and I think with a little investment, Livingston Park could be a whole new world for a lot of people in Orange. You know, we know, we know it's there. I don't think most Orange residents is there, but it's, it's really a diamond in the rough, and I think, uh, it's worth a little investment. Appreciate your time, Mayor.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Mary Bernard. I'm with the Big Think Advice Reserve, and with your indulgence, I'm gonna read a brief statement. We are the Livingston Park Restoration Committee, consisting of conservationists from Harden, Jefferson, and Orange County. We prepared the proposed plan as connecting the city of Orange along Adams Bayou in a waterfront freeway. We envision a park as a natural artery extending from the freeway to the freeway, with the paddling trail, birdwatching facility, fishing piers, and much more. This park in the city of Orange will always be available to residents of Orange and has the potential to attract more visitors and naturalists to appreciate Orange, and thank you so much for listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we'll try to have, council, if you have any questions on our team, is there?
Any questions from council?
Thank you.
This will have been brought to our name.
Yep, and so I do want to reiterate for those who are here, the citizens, that, um, this has been brought to us several times before. Golden Triangle Polymers has been here, so when you see the expenditures, can you elaborate on the, when they say the donation from GTP?
Sure. So, uh, GT Polymers, um, has been a great partner out there. They have, uh, they need to build a, a pipeline from the plain out to the river, and as part of that, uh, they need to get onto the park property. As, so as we negotiated that, uh, those easement rights, uh, GT Polymers was gracious enough to add additional money, uh, into that agreement for the repurposing of this park, the reestablishment, uh, once they disturbed it, in order to put those things back. And so they've been a great partner in saying, just let us know what it is that we need to do, and that's where the master plan, quite frankly, really began, was part of that GT Polymers conversation. And again, GT Polymers, they're a, they're a great partner in this process, waiting for them to start, uh, and we'll be working with them throughout their construction as they enter into the United States. And, uh, ultimately, as we come out of that, um, it'll be a different feel than Livingston Park, but we're hopeful that it'll be a much better feel.
Thank you so much, Mr. Paul. Appreciate it. Hey, there is no vote to be had on this presentation. We thank you once again, Mr. Jack. We'll move to the resolutions. Item eight A, considered a resolution awarding a contract to McKenna's Construction in an amount not to exceed seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-six cents for the bid number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, Cove Recreation Pavilion Project. Ms. Floyd?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Um, the preliminary estimate for this project was expected to be seventy thousand dollars. Out of the four bidders received for this bid package, um, the lowest exceed that estimate almost five thousand due to increasing materials. Staff has been awarding the bid to McKenna's Construction of Silvus, Texas, not to exceed the amount of seventy-four thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars and thirty-six.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Floyd. Do we have any questions or comments? Do we have a motion?
Motion.
Do we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Floyd. Item nine A, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC, approving the first amendment and assignment request from Nexcore Christmas Hospital, Orange, at sixty-nine oh one Medical Center Drive, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, to SAFNX M O B, Orange LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, at sixty-nine oh one Medical Center Drive, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, concerning an EDC incentive for eligible infrastructure improvements, and an amount not to exceed fifty thousand for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Grant?
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Uh, just a little background on this project. Nexcore had previously approached the EDC, asking for some financial assistance in adding a, uh, a cover over the main entrance into the medical offices portion of the hospital. So previously approved was funding not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. Nexcore staff did, uh, approach EDC and asked for a couple of adjustments in the agreement. So the first adjustment was to change the green tea from Nexcore Christmas Hospital Orange to SAFNX M O B, Orange LLC, a Delaware Limited Liability Company, and then just a correction to, uh, state that the project would fund it in an amount not to exceed fifty thousand dollars. So we're bringing those two corrections to, to your agreement.
Okay, any questions or comments?
You said it was Nexcore and then it changed to?
It's, it's just a, a change of the, the company name. So the, the property or the hospital is that, be on the appraisal district. It's also stated in that SAFNX M O B, so it's just, uh, the, the company name, the, the LLC.
We can deal with this.
It's still the same company, the same staff, it's just under a different LLC.
Yeah. All right, do we have a motion? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Henigan?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Grant.
Thank you.
And thank you to our EDC Corporation for working with businesses and entities in our community to help us bring about new business and also to re-strengthen and restructure what we have. So on to item nine B, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC in the form of a motion of intent approving an EDC incentive with Luigi's Italian Grill at thirty-one oh eight Edgar Brown Drive, Orange, Texas, seven seven six three zero, for eligible infrastructure improvements and an amount not to exceed ninety-two thousand for the purpose of economic development. Ms. Grant?
So, uh, Armand, who is the owner of Luigi's, has approached EDC and asked for assistance in upgrading their whole signage in front of the restaurant and some plumbing upgrades. So we're
So we're, we're very happy to have Luigi's here. They've been very successful here in the city of Orange and we're thrilled that they continue to do business here. So with that funding, they will, like I said, make, have a new full signage and then they will have a new grease trap installed and a hundred feet of a new sewer line installed. So a whole turnabout, I would achieve.
Okay. Any questions or comments from council? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
And Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Graham. Okay, on to item nine, C, consider a motion approving action taken by the Orange EDC concerning a timeline extension to February twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty-five for Studio Seventeen located at seventeen hundred West Cali Payne Road, Orange, Texas, seven-seven-six-three-two due to construction delays. Mr. Train.
Yes, so Mayor and Council, the current project timeline completion was scheduled for the end of August, but as a result of the construction delays, primarily with storm drainage issues and some other engineering design, the project has requested timeline extension through February of twenty-twenty-five, which was formally approved by the EDC this morning. So now it goes before you as well. Thanks.
Okay. Any questions or comments from Mr. Train?
Make a motion.
I'll second. Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Train. Very excited to see Studio Seventeen moving from the Broadway Shopping Center due to not having enough room. It's awesome, especially in the land of southeast Texas where it's all about football, football, football and sports, to see a place for our young ladies and our young, young daughters and women of the community have a chance to grow and expand their dance capability. It's awesome to see that. So thank you to Studio Seventeen. Item nine, B, consider a motion appointing two of the Citizens Advisory Committee for term expiring August thirteenth, two thousand twenty-eight. Ms. Monty.
Good morning. First, I just wanted to thank city council members who were able to make it to the river setting at the Code Recreation Area yesterday. Your attendance was appreciated. This morning, we have one vacancy on our Citizens Advisory Committee. I have three applications. I have Sarah Brown, Erica Rinepon, and Benny Rhodes. So I will leave it to you to prepare nominations.
Do we have a nomination from someone on council?
I'm nominating Benny Rhodes.
We have a nomination for Benny Rhodes. Do we have a second? Okay, we have a second. All right. We have a motion in a second. Ms. Salter? Okay, Ms. McKenna? Mr. Chandler? Mr. Charles? Mr. Burge? Ms. Hennington? Motion passes. So Mr. Rhodes, congratulations to Mr. Rhodes. Item nine, E, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the fiscal year twenty-twenty-five proposed budget for the city of Orange. Ms. Zito.
Yes, Mayor and Council, I've already provided y'all with the proposed budget book. This motion is just to acknowledge receipt. If you'd be able to have to review before our budget approval.
If y'all have any questions between now and next Tuesday, feel free to y'all.
All council members have received their book, okay? We have a motion. We have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Motion passes. On to item nine, F, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the twenty-two-four certified appraised values and the corresponding reports from the Orange County appraisal district. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so we received our certified values from appraisal district. It starts on page ninety-eight of your packet, but basically our total market value for the city went increased about twenty-two million. However, our total taxable value, which is the base that we assess property taxes on, and get our revenue decreased by two million. They, the main reasons it decreased was we had more extensions on our tier and we had more value lost due to people protesting in the in court. So our taxable value decreased. So if y'all remember in the past, we talked about that, as the value decreases, the rates will, will go up. There's an inverse relationship between the value and our rates. Also, just to point out that our market, our average market homestead value increased by five thousand. It's now a hundred and seventy thousand for our average homestead. And the average taxable homestead only increased three thousand, six hundred and eight dollars. Our average taxable homestead is a hundred and thirty-six thousand four seventy-two.
Any other questions for Ms. Zito? Hey, if not, do we have a motion acknowledging receipt? Can we have a motion in a second? Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. Item nine, G, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the certification of the twenty-two-four anticipated collection rate and twenty-two-three excess debt collection. Ms. Zito.
Yes, so every year from the tax assessment collector, we receive these anticipation collection rates as part of our calculations that determine our tax rates. So they have estimated we're going to collect a hundred and fifteen percent of debt service funds and they say that we collected last year a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars more than was levied. And that is true. I verified these numbers and they, both of these figures, they're into our tax rate. So they have to certify this figure. So this motion is to just accept this certification.
All right. Thank you for verifying all of those numbers for us. Do we have any questions or comments for Ms. Zito? We have a motion to approve or acknowledge receipt?
May I make a motion?
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. On to item nine, H, consider a motion acknowledging receipt of the statement of twenty-two-four tax rates and the corresponding worksheets from the Orange County Tax Assessor Collector. Ms. Zito.
So, as I stated before, we had been working on our tax rates and the tax assessment collector did provide us with our tax rates. The first one to talk about is the non-revenue. That is supposed to be the rate that basically allows you to keep your, maintain your same rate than from last year. Our rate is more than last year's rate because of our taxable value. So the non-revenue rate is point seven eight, oh, six, eight, three. And then you have the voter approval rate. That is the highest rate that the state allows before it triggers an election, an automatic election. And that is typically more than your non-revenue rate, right? Because it's the cap typically. We have a problem with our debt rate. As I already showed you, they said we collected more than last year and that affects our rates. So our voter approval rate is less than your revenue. But it's point seven eight, one, two, five, nine. So that turns a key in our, our rates. So our debt rate last year was point oh, eight, eight, two, six, one. But this year, our debt rate is point oh, six, oh, oh, four, one, three. So that's because of that excess collection. So it lowered our debt rate. So that lowered our voter approval rate. And the one last rate we, they calculate for us is the de minimis. If you're a city under a population of thirty thousand, you have a de minimis rate, which is a rate calculated to allow a city to collect or to levy five hundred thousand dollars, or whatever, whatever rate it. So it's, it's to calculate to allow a small city who might have, be struggling to at least get five hundred thousand therabounds. And our de minimis rate also ended up from last year and that rate is point seven nine, seven, eight, two, five. So last year, if you remember, we adopted a rate of point seven, five, nine, five. All those rates are more than that, our adopted rate. So that is not the city raising rates. It's because of the way it's calculated by the state law, it's because of our tax value base has decreased.
Thank you. That was, no, that's a lot of time.
It's our nature.
No, thank you. All right. Do we have a question or comment? We have a motion to acknowledge receipt.
Motion.
Can we have a motion? Miss second, Ms. Salter?
Aye.
Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Mr. Charles?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Zito. All right, on to item ten, reports, city manager report.
Mayor and Council, again, in our discussions at this time about the budget season, it's always that time in the inner world, we have to have some additional meetings, so appreciate y'all scheduling your time so that you can attend these. Again, as I mentioned a few minutes ago, so next week, so Tuesday, August the twentieth, here in the council chambers at five-thirty, we're going to do a budget workshop. So again, if you have any questions or concerns between now and then, please bring those up to me or Cheryl. But again, Tuesday, August the twentieth at five-thirty, we'll do a budget workshop. Tuesday, August the twenty-seventh, will be our regularly scheduled council meeting at five-thirty. Then again, Tuesday, September the third at five-thirty, we're going to have a special call meeting to adopt the tax rate and some other budget stuff. And then again, Tuesday, September the tenth at nine AM is our regularly scheduled council meeting. So counting today, it's going to be five council meetings in a row. So it's that fun time of year. Just so it doesn't feel left out, Tuesday, September the twenty-fourth at five-thirty is a regularly scheduled council meeting. So what's going on and do we need y'all's participation in those? Because there are some of those where we need a certain number of council members to approve certain actions. So I know that remains on all our time, but appreciate y'all making ourselves ready for that.
All right, thank you, Mr. Jones. All right, on to city council report. Ms. McKenna?
Yesterday was a great day. It was a great day in the neighborhood. Thanks to Rita, to Kelvin, and the Parks Department and all the staff. You know, I thought about that old school building that when you went to school there and it just deteriorated, how awful it looked. And I stood out there yesterday and looked around and those, those are my hard goods. So good job, guys.
No report.
No report.
Mr. Burge?
Yes, I want to say the Blues Festival is an awesome activity. It's the first time we've done that and it was great. So, and the second thing I need to say is I hate to throw gas on a fire, but I got a call yesterday about Gloria Street, about a huge big pothole that, one of the businesses over there, she called me. So they're just asking for some stuff to put in the hole there to keep them, you know. So other than that, no report.
All right, Mr. Chandler?
No report.
Ms. Salter?
I just want to say thanks to all, everyone at Code. You should be very proud. We should be very proud of Code. And just because you stay on the other area of town, please go and utilize some of the other parks and things here in the city of Orange. The Blues Festival, for those who came out, it was great. If you missed it, please try to come out next year. It really was something really nice. We need to patronize and go do a lot of the other things that, that we offer here in the city. And Sunset Park, I received a call, I did go look. Just want to encourage people, do not park on the lawn. It damages the parks. So please utilize the concrete area that is created for your parking. Let's take care of our beautiful parks. Our children need them and we need them for our neighborhoods. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And so thank you to everyone that came tonight. We appreciate it. I do want to recognize a few people in here before they walk out, so because I asked them if they could stay and they did. We have members of our EDC who are not a part of city council. So we have Ms. Tremena Horn, that is a part of our EDC. We have Ms. Margaret Adams. We also have Mr. Jason Rojery, who is the president, and Mr. Mortimer. And so you heard us talking about several things that we're doing business-wise in the city. So thank you for your hard work and dedication. Also want to thank Ms. Mason, Mr. Burley, and Mr. Ruskey for speaking in front of council today. And please know that sometimes we do have a lot that we want to say and we just can't at this time. It's part of the Texas Constitution, but we will work with you. And also want to say thank you to Mount Olive Baptist Church and other churches within our area that did the back-to-school programs, Destiny Church, the backpacks, the back-to-school Orange County. It was amazing to see so many churches and people giving back. And of course, the Code Recreation Area. I do want to address something very quickly, not to hold you up. So the numbers that you heard tonight from, or this morning, sorry, from Ms. Zito, we are about to experience a situation that is going to take a lot of decisions being made that we have not had to do in my last six years as mayor and the late, and those who are here on council. We have an adverse effect as many of you hear every day. We talk about the economy and how things have been impacted, although safe things affect us as a municipality. In my time here on council, we have never raised the tax rate. However, as you can see, as Ms. Zito has explained, due to the dropping and the raising of prices and inflation, there will be some type of situational change this year. What that may be, we're not there yet. This is our first day to receive the proposed budget. There is a decline in sales tax. There's a decline in people shopping local with what we have been able to establish here. The actual loss of international paper and invista have negatively impacted us to the tune of almost three million dollars. However, we will find a way to get through this. We have asked every department in the city to cut ten percent and we will find a way. This is one of those situations where I want the citizens to remember we've always been open, honest, and transparent and we will continue to remain to do that. However, I ask that you understand that with all these wonderful years of land gap and growth and expansion, sometimes things happen, but we will face it and we will come through it successfully because we will continue to put Christ first in all that we do. So with that being said, thank you to council ahead of time because it's fixing to get rough. Thank you to those who work for the city, staff, team, and members. We are in negotiation budgets with our fire and police. We definitely want to do what's best to make sure we keep them here locally. So as you see us bring things to you and if it goes to the public and you don't understand, please attend, please watch on YouTube, or you can call us, message us, or like they do at my house, pull up to the front yard and we'll tell you what we're working on. So with that being said...
Hey, Mayor. Just, I appreciate you saying being transparent. Just a reminder, we're going to go to the executive session office. When we come out, there may be other action, but one of the things we will do is set that cap tax rate. So if anybody came to listen to what that, you know, possible cap on the tax rate, please stick around.
Right. And so that is the cap. That is, we're not saying that that's where we're going at this time. We're saying that due to how the Texas Legislature works, the size of our city and where we are as far as our numbers from the county, that is the absolute top that we could go to. However, there's things that have to take place for you to get there. So we're not setting it today. We're just showing you the ceiling and where we could go. And then we will work to work, we will work to be under that as we have every year prior to this. So with that being said, we will now adjourn to close executive session. Deliberation with city attorney, pursuant to chapter five-five-one, Texas Government Code, section five-five-one, point zero-seven-one. Consultation with city attorney regarding pending or contemplated litigation in regards to Felony Green versus the city of Orange. We also have consultation on collective bargaining agreement, negotiations with International Association of Firefighters, Local Number One-four-three-two. And we also have a consultation on collective bargaining negotiations with the Orange Municipal Police Association. And we also have a consultation on collective bargaining negotiations with the Orange Municipal Police Association. So at this time, if you're not a part of City Council or staff that is required to be here, you're welcome to hang out outside while we go through this, and we will reconvene once we are done with that. We will now reconvene in open session, take actions, and consider regarding items eleven-eight-one, eleven-eight-two, and eleven-eight-three. There are no actions. We will now move to item thirteen, A. Discussion of Possible Action on the Tax Rate. If Proposed Tax Rate Will Exceed the Non-Revenue Rate, Take Rather Vote and Schedule a Public Hearing. The Notice of Public Hearing on Tax Rate Increase for the City of Orange, Texas, will be published and posted per the requirements of the Texas Property Tax Code, Section twenty-six, point zero five. Okay, do I have a motion to second, see the cap for the tax rate?
Make a motion.
Okay, and you will read that.
We have to read that.
Then you have to read that.
Okay. I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of zero point seven nine, seven zero zero, or one hundred dollars, which is effective a one point five seven percent increase in the tax rate, and scheduling a public hearing on Tuesday, September the third, two thousand twenty-four, at five thirty PM.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Now we will have to take a roll call vote. Ms. McKenna?
Aye.
Mr. Childs? Ms. Hennington?
Aye.
Mr. Burge?
Aye.
Mr. Chandler?
Aye.
Ms. Salter?
Aye.
And I will say aye as well, as mayor. Okay? Thank you so much. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Motion.
Do we have a motion, second and third? I want to favor say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned. Thank you.